Or schools, you know.
Recording in progress.
Hey, good evening, everybody. This is a work session of the Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm serving as the mayor. Council, will you introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Potem.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Danielle McKenney, council member.
Silky Pope, council member.
Amy Nissel, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay, hey, thank you, thank you. Council, any information items? There's definitely one information item that we're going to speak about regarding the fire department. It's on the agenda, okay. Any other information items?
I have one on the elevators.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Well, let me say this. This is an information, this is a work session of the council. We meet on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions and meetings are always open to the public except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe council's deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment during these times. If you wish to make a comment, to ask a question, or to address the city administration, if you're in the room, just raise your hand. After being recognized, you can go over to the podium, and you need to state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab on the bottom of the screen to submit a written question, or if you raise your virtual hand, we'll recognize you and promote you so you can speak. Once again, you'll need to provide your name and where you live in Greenbelt or in the area. We need that for the minutes. And of course, if you are watching on Facebook, or YouTube, or cable TV, you can send us an email at questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So for the speaking comments, please limit your remarks, three to five minutes, and speak on one topic related to question and consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. And in general, just be civil in your remarks, and we'll do the same. So we're here tonight. The topic of the work session is check-in with the reparations commission. And see, first, let me introduce the city manager, Jose Somorón. How are you, Mr. Somorón?
Good evening, I'm doing great, thank you. It's been a busy day.
What's going on, that's for sure.
And joining me is Tyra Smith, our DEI officer.
Hey, Tyra, how you doing?
I'm doing good this evening, how are you?
Too bad, not too bad. So, let's see, I was gonna start off saying something briefly about the reparations commission. Because it's a twofold, actually, there are three things on the work session agenda tonight. We're having a check-in with the reparations commission. The Greenbelt Reparations Commission is a 21-member body established in 2022 by the city of Greenbelt to study and make recommendations related to local reparations for African-Americans and Native American residents. Back in November of 2021, Greenbelt residents voted overwhelmingly, 1,500 to about 900, in favor of a referendum to create the commission. The referendum was proposed by then-mayor Colin Byrd, who, to address the city's history of segregation and land taken from Native Americans. So since that time, the 21-member commission was actually appointed by the city council in December of '22 from a pool of 31 applicants. And in the selection process, we were striving to attain a diverse group of Greenbelt residents, geographically and just in terms of knowledge, business leaders, religious leaders, regular people, just a good blend of people, to make sure that we had a robust discussion that was represented across section of the city. So the commission's mission is to review Greenbelt's history and to make recommendations for local reparations to address past harms against African-Americans and Native Americans. So it's been, it's been about 18 months since we were able to convene, the initial convening of the reparations commission. And the charge that council gave was rather open intentionally, just to provide an opportunity for the commission to work on its own, to figure out the best path to move ahead and to move ahead with the freedom without any encumbrance of council. So that was rather intentional. But it's been a little while, so we were just hoping to kind of get a check-in and maybe to talk about next steps, just in terms of not so much a timeframe, but just establishing a regular check-in opportunity. So are there any members of the reparation commission here now? Because if there are, why don't you come up to the table? This one here. Welcome. Now, why are you putting Conrad in the little chair? Conrad Hurling, former councilman, Conrad Hurling. So it's a big table, and you can all pull up a chair. So council appreciates your work as volunteers, the time and effort to kind of organize and, you know, delineate responsibility and talk about outcomes and deliverables. You know, this is a big task, and we appreciate that. So hopefully, you submitted a written report, but first, if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great. Now, you're gonna have to speak on the microphone.
Lorena Ferdinand.
Lois, Lois Rizzato.
Tom Hurling and friends of the people next to me.
And Denise Naddison.
Okay.
And I think we have a few other members of the commission online. I'm trying to promote those. Actually, if you're a member of the commission, I'm trying to compare the list, but if you're a member of the reparations commission, could you raise your hand, and then I can promote you to be a panelist? But I see we have certainly Mark Miller. I don't know, I'm just trying to compare the list, but I didn't, I wasn't doing it fast enough. That may be, that may be the only person we have online right now.
Okay, cool. And of course, Megan Serin Young is here, and she has been working as a liaison to the committee, just to listen and to try and provide some additional support. So let's just kick things off. If you want to talk a little bit, what's going on with the commission? It's been about a year and a half.
Actually, a year.
Well, 15 months. Approximately. So we really didn't get any direction from the council. So we, you know, 21 people with different opinions, we had to kind of figure out how to work together. So we brought in a consultant who helped us get organized and create a little bit of a strategic plan to figure out how we're gonna get our work done, what our goals are, and then how we're gonna do that. And so through that process, we've identified a governance structure, and we've created three subcommittees. So the reparations policy research subcommittee explores reparations practices across the country, and it will help us learn how communities have done reparations elsewhere, including identifying definitions, processes used, recommendations that were made, and the impact of their work and the response from the community. So we're trying to learn from what other reparations commissions have done. Currently, they have identified 15 communities across the country that are doing reparations work as well, and we're trying to speak to them, but they also have documents available on a website that we can access and analyze. Our intention there is to deliver a glossary of terms so that we're all on the same page in terms of what reparations means, what harms mean. The summary of the processes will be also delivered, and a summary of the recommendations that have been made by other commissions. And we also want to see what the impact of that work has been on their communities. The historical research subcommittee has been researching harms that's been done in and around the land that's currently known as Greenbelt, and we've decided we're going to not limit the timeframe for that research, so any harm in any amount of time in order to include Indigenous people who may have been harmed prior to when the city was established. So they're investigating city governance rules, ordinances, and codes to determine the harm to African-Americans and Native Americans. They have over 500 pages of research at this time that's documenting harms that have been done. They will also, where possible, link those harms to city codes and ordinances and governance where we can, and then clarify any actions that the city might have done in the past to repair any of that harm, if that exists. The community education and engagement subcommittee will identify and interview African-Americans and Native American residents to learn about their perspectives on the impact of systemic harm that's been done to their communities, as well as their current experiences living in Greenbelt. They'll reach out to current members of the community to inform them about the work of the reparations commission and better understand their perspectives on what they consider to be harm. We will take this information, this community engagement subcommittee will take the information from the reparations policy research committee and the historical research subcommittee, and begin educating the community about the history of Greenbelt and the context of reparations across the country. So the governance is the executive committee, and that's gonna be made up of a chair, a vice chair, a secretary, and the three heads of our subcommittees. And there, we will track the work of each of the subcommittees, set deadlines, create agendas for meetings, advise the full commission on upcoming activities, and determine the needs for the reparations commission to complete this work. We have set a deadline to create a draft report by February 2025, and in the meantime, we need to do community outreach, synthesize the research to better understand how we can inform recommendations that best serve the city and its residents. So I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Lois Rizzato.
Thank you. Okay. I realize that the city council, when you put this commission together, really based it on your advisory boards and your advisory committees. Every reparations committee, commission, and task force has a particular structure designated by the appointing body. To do that, you would have had to have people in here from reparations groups informing you about guidance and directions, so that when we started, we did not start like an advisory group, but we started as a reparations commission. I understand the difference, and I appreciate the fact that 21 people, you know, you thought, well, let them figure it out. No, that, no, we really needed to have some directions and framework upon which to operate. So to that end, in order to be realistic, while we have a 500-page document, we have a 500-page document of historical facts, that document really is going to need a deep dive in order for any of us to be able to select out what is needed to report and how that those reports are going to be recommended, become recommendations to you. The other thing, there are no Native Americans appointed to the commission, and yet our charge is to study harms done to African-Americans and Native Americans. My recommendation is we should still look for any Native Americans that are living in Greenbelt, and if not, I'm requesting that the council consider appointing either an advisor, a Native American advisor, who can assist us, because if we don't have their voice, we're doing a major disservice. So that's a consideration that I hope you'll take. We need an action plan and a roadmap in order to collect the voices and determine the reparative needs of African-Americans and American Indians living in Greenbelt without causing additional trauma, harm, or hurt. The commission needs a paid administrative coordinator who can collect, maintain, and coordinate the distribution of all minutes and subcommittee reports. The commission needs researchers who can review employment records of African-Americans and American Indians, and who worked in Greenbelt for the city, particularly the city of Greenbelt, and we'd like to work with Mr. Martinez, your HR director, I believe, to do that. We'd like to review GHI records to determine when African-Americans and American Indians were allowed to move into GHI homes and determine the current resident status. We'd like to review city codes to determine how they impacted non-white residents of Greenbelt. We would like to review police records to determine if African-Americans are still targeted more than any other residents of Greenbelt. And we need readers who can read the research document that we have to determine if the African-American voice and the American Indian voice is prominent. We also would like to develop a webpage devoted to the reparations commission and link that to the city's website. Funds to support a graphic design and printing to create a basic information package, web maintenance support, and other costs related to community engagement. We'd like to work with reparations content groups and individuals to help the commission speak in a unified voice about reparative justice. It is unrealistic for anyone to think that a commission of mostly working people with young families can do the necessary administrative coordination and research required without paid assistance. The commission is not like an advisory board or anything like that. We, we have a lot of research, and most of the research to date has been done by one individual and then supported by about three other people. That can continue, and it's not sustainable. I have finished.
Well, thank you, thank you. Other members of the commission, would you like to speak? Mr. Adams, please.
Tom Adams, and I would just like to, first of all, thank Denise and Lois and the leaders of our commission who've done an extraordinary job getting us to this point. With 21 people, we could still be found, you know, trying to figure out where home base is. We have a sense of direction, and we're heading that way, but we're grossly understaffed and underfunded, and so the $30,000 you've allocated for us is a start. I'm sure it's a number that was pulled from the air. We'd like to come back to you with a real budget, once we better assess what it's gonna cost to do these various things, but it's gonna be more than $30,000, in my opinion, in order to not have this drag on forever. I mean, if we try to nickel-and-dime our way down the volunteer road, it's gonna take forever, and we're gonna get exhausted, and we're gonna fight with each other, and it's gonna get ugly, and we don't want that to happen. We have a good-spirited group, we're working together well, and with your resources and your support, I think we can bring this to a good outcome for Greenbelt.
Appreciate that. Other members like to speak? Yes, Mr. Hurling.
Rodney, and specifically, yes, I'm much better with a microphone.
I don't know about that.
Sometimes I have my doubts, too. But, you know, I think everybody here knows I have a variety of experiences and worked with some really, really outstanding groups, be it councils or art center organizations, et cetera. And this is just, one of the things that I really note is that I think on the whole, each one of the 21 people really listen to each other. A lot of times when you're with an organization that's even, you know, smaller than that, they'll have sometimes difficulty, and I think one of the things that has been already referred to is that in coming together for, you know, a report, it's gonna require that we keep that up. But I just want to say that one of the things that sometimes we forget to do is to thank a person or people in particular, and definitely Megan has been just invaluable to our organization and has really kept us together, because it is one of those things where it's almost like the Appalachians, or maybe sometimes more like the Rockies, where you can sometimes kind of lose track, and she's helped us to stay focused, and that's been invaluable. So we have to definitely thank her as well.
It's definitely true. So just in terms of the timeframe, what's happened to this point, you know, the referendum was back in 2022, actually, 2021. So, I mean, that was no, it wasn't just something that was pulled out of the air. You know, Mayor Byrd at the time thought that through carefully and consulted with, you know, broad cross-section of the community. And after it was placed on the ballot as a question, it came to council, and, you know, council considered, talked about the implications of a 21-person commission. We had a concern, still a concern of that, that's a big group, you know, and how are they gonna move forward? But, you know, we were constrained a little bit because the referendum question was concise and clear. So, yeah, the commission is not like any other advisory board, but there are precedents for the way that this has come together in the form of task forces that have worked on problems, challenges. And, you know, my brief memory of the history of Greenbelt on council, there was a large task force that worked on trying to save the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School when the county was going to deaccession it initially. We had about 16 or 17 individuals working on that for close to a year. They produced a really great effort, came up with a report, and then the county changed things around and decided to hang on to it. And also, I mean, my colleagues, Mr. Roberts, and probably remembers the group that came together to consider the North Elementary School and the Community Center. So that was, how large was that group?
Citizens that took place?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. I don't know, but it was a hotly contested referendum. It was passed by a small margin, so.
Just in terms of the task force that worked on, a lot of people worked on that and put a lot of energy into it. So, you know, Megan Serin Young has been kind of working with you in a limited way since the beginning, and council authorized funding for a consulting firm to help facilitate, and just refresh my memory. So that's a commitment for a year, or how do we do that?
We are, the impact firm was able to help the group organize into, as Denise pointed out, a viable structure with three definitive committees, as well as a governance, a new governance structure that we can follow. So that part of the, of us coming together has been very helpful. They provided a tool that some of the committees are using as they move forward and design the next steps in their, in the process. But we no longer need process, we now need content. We need reparations content, and that's gonna cost.
So, and I'm glad that we're having the conversation tonight, because when we, you know, authorized someone to help with facilitation, that's something that council, you know, committed was open to doing from the beginning. So, you know, when we got the request, we did it. So I just think it's really important for us to be able to check in and just, you know, assess what the needs are, and so that, not just council, but so that the public, you know, really has an understanding of the important, the good work that's going on. So I appreciate the fact that we're talking a bit now, because it's really helpful. Yeah, Mayor Potem?
I think Ms. Pope has it.
Ms. Pope?
I think, I agree with you, 21 people and a subject as heavy as this is difficult to do, right? And I think I was one of the persons who said, no, you need to have some structure, you need to have some, we need to give you some plan, some idea, what, some task, some goal, something, right? And we need, probably need help with that, because it is very different than our regular committees. You operate on a total different level, and of course, there's 21 people, but some of the experiences that you need, you need to get them from the outside, right? So that, I understand that, and I'm sorry that we were not able to provide you a little bit more guidance right from the get-go. So the other two committees that we have, the other two task force that we have, there were a lot of people as well, but I think the topics were different, you know, that, so that was a little, there's, I think that's a big difference between reparations task force and when we had the Greenbelt Middle School at that point, and then the one previous, which of course, Mr. Roberts would know more about. But I do want to thank you for all your hard work, and I know that that is not easy, and of course, we want to do whatever we need to do to support you. So financially, however, that might be a little challenging, but we will, we will work something out, of course, so, but we just, we just approved our budget. I'm just saying.
I know, we will kind of come early at work sessions.
Yeah, yeah, it came a week ago. No, but of course, we need to do whatever we can to support you, and whatever way you need us to support you, because we don't know, we don't have all the answers either, so, but I do appreciate it. I know it's a tough undertaking, and I do appreciate you coming to us and working on that so diligently, and given your free time, no less.
What free time?
The little bitch.
Council member, or did you?
Yeah, so I think, I think as the mayor sort of alluded to, I think the idea was to not, not, as council, not direct too much and put our, put our thumbs on the scale, as it, but maybe it was a little bit too little direction, that maybe there was a different balance that could have been achieved. But it sounds like you got to a good place, and you have a good structure and a good basis for things. So I guess, one, one thing, and it sounds like you've also had some conversations, because I think there's some interesting complementarity between what we're doing with privacy and what the reparations commission is doing. So I know you've talked, and I think, I think I was able to come to your last meeting, and so I'm hoping that there may be some expertise, especially as you were talking about some of the interviews of current residents, because that's, that's very much in line with what privacy is doing next. So I hope that we can take advantage of these two efforts kind of happening in parallel, even though I think the reparations commission is looking a lot more back, although the privacy is to a certain extent as well in terms of like city code and things like that. So I hope, because I think they did do at least some of that for part, for phase one, was looking at some of the city code. So I think that's worth talking to them about what they already had found in there, and if there's a different lens to look at that, and maybe some expertise there. But then I think, you know, as Tom was saying, I think it would be great to have, if you can present us with a budget about, you know, what is it gonna cost, and we can figure out what can we do to fund that, and whether it's, I mean, we did just pass the budget, but I don't know, I don't know if there are grants for this sort of thing out there. Maybe there are, maybe we can, I don't know. I think that's something to look into. The other question I had was, I mean, we didn't do it in like a regular advisory committee in the sense you have a staff liaison, but you don't have a council liaison, and I think that was deliberate, because again, we wanted to stay hands-off. But I think something we could do is think about if the reparations commission wanted it, not have an official-appointed council liaison, but still have a council member, a different one, maybe a rotating council member, so it's not a formal liaison position, but try to have somebody at the meetings, if you would like that. I don't think we wanted to impose that.
Really probably what have helped is a parliamentarian.
Okay.
Because, because we discovered that the California, well, California had blue-cou money, but they did have a parliamentarian, and they, and they describe it as a, as a person that really helped guide and direct, and they were, you know, not as large as us, but a large group. And they also had the paid administrative staff, which us trying to, poor Denise, poor Denise trying to keep the minutes. which us trying to, poor Denise, poor Denise trying to keep the minutes together and work a full-time job and have a family. And, and it just doesn't make sense. It's not realistic, you know?
Do you, I mean, I know, how, do you envision it needing to be a full-time person?
No, no.
Like, how many hours a week do you think you would need a person based on the amount of work that's been?
Tom and I were going to work on a job description. So maybe 10, 15 hours.
Okay.
Halftime, halftime.
So maybe up to halftime?
Yeah, halftime.
Okay. Yeah, but I think having, like, spelling out, because you mentioned the paid administrative coordinator, you mentioned some researchers, which seems like that, something like that. I don't, maybe there would be some academic resources that we could tie into without necessarily that. And then website and graphic design.
We're going to follow up and see. But we also, the readers are going to be critical.
Right, yeah. And the, and website and graphic design, those seem more like short-term contract sort of things, rather than necessarily a, a, a regular staff person all the time.
Mr. Adams?
Just one thing on the website. So we, in the Community Engagement Committee, we talked about that at some length. And we're concerned not to have multiple appearances for the reparations commission in Greenbelt. So the city has a website. So what we're proposing, we think that we need some independence and to be able to move a little more quickly than your overstaffed, overstaffed, excuse me, overworked staff. That was a really bad one. But anyhow, so what we're proposing is, and I don't want to get into weeds on this, but I just wanted to lurch in case there's any red flags you want to give us, is that we would link from your homepage to a webpage that we would develop. And we would, that's where we'd upload the things that we would work on and for the public and where we could do surveys with the public and where we can have chats with the public or do the things we need to do on a kind of in-the-moment way. And then anybody could go to the city website and get to that site.
And we did that with.
That's simple enough to do.
We did that with Engage Greenbelt, with the ARPA outreach. Because that was, there were some things that that website could do that weren't, that our city website, the platform that it's on, didn't really support.
So, yeah, it, no, it was a, it was a sub-page. I mean, it's easy to link a page to the website. But Ms. Andrews and staff would have to, it would have to kind of conform a little bit. But, you know, we could easily do that.
I think the original development of that Engage Greenbelt was part of the group that we, wasn't that part of the group that we hired to do the ARPA outreach? I don't know why I'm looking at you this way. You weren't here at the time. I, I don't know that city staff developed that. I think we maintain it now. But I think it might have been developed by the group that we hired to, to do some of the focus, the focus groups with the public related to ARPA. I think.
I can speak on the platform. It's a separate WordPress instance. So we own the domain and it's a WordPress installation. So it's fairly easy to maintain.
And it's maintained by city staff now. But I believe it was developed by, as a, as a contract through, with ARPA money way back at the beginning when we were looking to do broader outreach because they did a whole survey and everything for us, too. I don't remember who did that.
Since it's WordPress, you know, I would assume that you'd probably be using. I mean, so it'll be easier to maintain. And personally, you know, I'm looking forward to the day, knock on wood, pretty soon where the city has a new website platform. Yeah, one that's easy to update. Councilmember Pompey?
Yes, thank you. You guys spoke, or I don't know if you spoke about this a bit, but I also read in your report that you had been connecting with other reparations commissions. You had attended, it sounds like a conference. So I was wondering with regards to staffing, have you found that other reparations commissions are also staffed? And is that sort of how you came up with? Yeah.
To answer your question, yes, yes. You know, some of them have a lot more resources than we will ever have. And that's, and that's understandable. But there was a definite staff. I think San Francisco worked with the Human Rights Department of San Francisco. So that's where they got all of that, you know? You know, so I, that's why I said that I think it would have helped had the council at that time really spoke with reparations groups or reparations people, people and said, what was your structure? Give us an idea of your structure. Because while I can, we can all appreciate the hands-on approach, I think every, every reparations group, they were given a framework and a timeframe. And then they were given certain staff to help them get there. So we, on the other hand, we, yeah, yeah.
Now you have a framework.
We have a framework now. We have a framework now, but we lost a lot of time. That's my point. We lost a lot of time. We have the framework now and we're moving on that framework. We have a tool to use to, for the committees to work on their projects. But we now need some reparations content. And I think we're going to need some help to get that.
Very good. Yes, councilmember?
One of the sort of coordinated efforts that might be good with the Jedi work is that you had mentioned the need for a glossary of terms as you're starting to dig into a lot of this research. And I know that that was one of the recommendations that Tribessi mentioned. And so I'm wondering if that could be something, thinking about cost, that we could leverage Tribessi's efforts and also combine some of those terms that you might already be seeing in some of the research that you're collecting.
And I was, you mentioned something else that they had been doing, reading the codes, the city codes. So that would be something we would need to speak with them about.
I'm not sure that they did that.
I think they looked at documentation. Did they do the?
City code.
Maybe not the, but the policies, okay, maybe not the city code. But I think policies, which is, which is sort of an outgrowth of the code. They did look at our written policies. I know they did that because they talked about it.
Part of the assessment was to do a culture assessment and a culture assessment. The structure assessment looked at our records, our policies. It did not go into details of the city code, but it did cover the structure elements.
I have a couple of questions or thoughts. I was just wondering, you're talking about, and so, you know, council, you know, this was a referendum question. Council spent a great deal of time kind of weighing the possibilities, talking about the structure, talking about how 21 people could, you know, possibly work together. So we must have had about six, five or six work sessions, you know, over the course of several months. And there was plenty, there was a lot of public input. It was wide open. We did surveys, I think, on the website. So I was wondering, you know, you talked about making sure that the indigenous Native American voice was true and clear. And when we were recruiting, you know, we tried really hard to identify individuals for the commission who were Native Americans or indigenous. And we didn't find any. So I'm just wondering, this, this idea of making the review, as you look at it, not constrained by time, you know, 1837. So I'm just wondering, and you said you've been working with some other groups. So have you been communicating with the College Park Restorative Justice Commission?
No, that's on the, that's, I mean, I believe the Community Engagement Committee is going to be doing that. We did have an interview with Elder Newman of the, of the Piscataway Convoy. I'm going, I'm going to get it wrong. So Mark, if you're on the line there, send the information. But he made it very clear to us that they don't see reparations the same way that African-Americans see reparations. And, but he did give us a number of leads with the University of Maryland right down the street that we're going to also follow up with. So we are working, we are going to connect. Maxine, I know who, Maxine Gross and I met at Lonnie Bunch's conference. So she's very willing to, waiting for, to be contacted from College Park.
So just thinking about with Restorative Justice and just looking at the harm done to indigenous people, you know, historically, I don't really see how, how you can just do Greenbelt geographically because, you know, Greenbelt wasn't here. Bruin Heights was here. Bruin Heights wasn't here.
That's the kind of research, yes, that, yes. Those are the kinds of questions.
Riverdale Mansion and, you know, the original people that settled with their plantations and farms in this area. So that seems like something that's, you really are going to have to focus more broadly. And maybe there's an opportunity to actually collaborate with College Park or other municipalities. And also the idea of academic support just seems really like, not low-hanging fruit, but I would think there are folks over at Maryland or Bowie State or Hopkins.
Yes, but our focus, and I don't, we're stuck at this point. Our focus has to now be on collecting from the voices of the people who were harmed or feel they were harmed. And that means we have to get out and do that. We can, you know, academics are fine, but they're not going to give us the information we need.
Spoken like a true academic, a former academic.
Well, I am an academic.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I think that's going to be really hard to capture native voices from the area because I think that they're almost, we're completely eradicated.
Well, that, 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 they're still here.
There are still some.
They are still here. And Elder Newman will tell you, we are still here. In fact, he has worked with one of our contacts at the University of Maryland. And who, they have done scholarly work together. And he's looking at enrollees. In other words, they enroll indigenous, the Piscataway people. And so he's looking at the enrollees to see if they're any living in or close to Greenbelt.
And there probably are, maybe not close to Greenbelt, but looking at Prince George's County, there definitely are. Yes, councilmember Nisa?
I would just ask that you please include in your budget or budget proposal fees that we could pay to any elders or native spokespeople who are speaking to us because I know that this entire issue of reparations can be a very heavy burden on tribal elders. So, because there are so few and they are being asked so many questions.
But, you know, we're not California. We're not San Francisco. We're Greenbelt.
Elder Newman, Elder Newman did not ask for any remuneration. He asked for a voice. And we let him, we heard his voice loud and clear. And I can tell you exactly what indigenous people are saying. Land repatriation of any artifacts or remains of indigenous people.
Do have artifacts.
And a physical presence. They have none. The Piscataway people were recognized by the state, but they don't have anything.
Do have artifacts, Randy, yes, Mayor Protem?
Well, I just, I found it interesting on the list of the other reparations commission, most of them are much larger entities, except for Tulahasse, Oklahoma, which it looks like has a, under 150 population. And they have apparently a, that's, I was just curious because I didn't know that. That's amazing that they're, I mean, that, it actually, even Wikipedia, I think, said their 2020 census was 83 people, so.
And Providence, Rhode Island, the city of Providence, Rhode Island is one of the few that is doing bifurcation. In other words, indigenous people and African-American people. There are not too many reparations groups doing that.
And there, but they, I looked them up, too, because I wasn't sure their population. They're at almost 200,000. So they're, they're a good bit larger than Greenbelt. I think College Park is the one that's closest in size to us.
Providence?
Providence, Rhode Island.
Because this weekend, one of my cousins was celebrating her life. She recently died. And we're going to be in Rhode Island. And one of the people that, one of my cousins actually ran for governor of Rhode Island twice.
Oh, you should talk to Denise. They might have questions for you to take.
Catch up with him about that as well.
Yes, so I would like to say that with, as far as collecting the voices and hearing from the community, I do think that there is opportunity for collaboration with privacy, being that we will be hosting the focus groups come August and doing that outreach. So we would just need, you know, what type of questions or data from the group that they would like to put out in the community so that we could ask those questions while we're doing the focus groups. And I do also believe that, I mean, it would essentially be a different scope of work. But I do believe that privacy would be able to help also with a lot of these asks that the commission has brought forward today. We do have them on, so they could go a little bit more into detail on how they could help specifically. But I do think that there's opportunity to collaborate more with them on this work.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, the Tribessi work, you know, needs to be informed by the needs of the reparations commission. Otherwise, you know, we'll be doing, possibly doing redundant work. Not redundant, but so, you know, it just seems like we have to sync these things up. You know, otherwise, you know, why?
We need to meet with them so they can hear what we, what we want to do and we can hear what their, what their plans are. Because they're, they're going to be slightly different, you know?
Hey, so just a couple of things that occurred to me. So you've done a couple of workshops, you know, just public programs. And unfortunately, they were at the same time as council was having meetings and whatnot. So we're not able to attend.
So we'll try to do them on a Thursday or something.
Right. So, you know, I really like the idea of having a website page, you know, WordPress and just kind of containing benchmarks or having links when these public programs are taking place so that people who are not able to attend will be able to look. And that's one of the challenges, from what I understand, of the 21-person commission, just trying to figure out a day when everybody can be at the same time.
Gate, I hope you all support Gate because Gate has been very, very helpful of taping all of our programs, large public programs, so they are on Gate and people can go in and look at them there.
Right. So I'd like to see those links to those on a webpage somehow. And what are some of the other kinds of content that you would put up there? Probably benchmarks somehow where you've been, links to the minutes. Of course, they're available. You know, that's the thing about our city website. Stuff's all spread around. You can't find anything or, I don't know, I can't find anything. Well, let me not go that far. But we need a new website, big time.
We're hosting demos on new sites, so.
Good, I like that.
Move that along.
In terms of additional kinds of information, the, this 500-page report has a lot of information and we are fortunate to have on our commission, while we don't have an indigenous Native American, we have a person who works in that field. And she's produced some orientation for the commission. So we have a lot of very talented people. And so the PowerPoints and the materials that we're producing to educate ourselves, we hope to share with the public through the website. We also are going to be doing outreach, obviously, at the farmers' markets and at the Labor Day Festival and at different places like that.
I think that also opens up the work that we're doing here to other communities that might be undertaking similar initiatives. Just having things in one place or kind of organized in one place would be really, really helpful. So I'm excited about that. What is, and with the, with the budget request, the funding request, you know, please let us know. When we convene the group, I think we said that, you know, if we could kind of hear back in about a year or so. And that was actually thinking in terms of the budget. So please, you know, pull, pull this information together. And I can assure you that council and the city manager will, will take a look at it staff. And we'll do what we can. We're not San Francisco. We're not Providence, Rhode Island, kind of like College Park. Hey, so what are they doing over in College Park? They've been having meetings on a regular basis, Restorative Justice. Are you following what they're doing there?
Yeah, I follow. Yes, I do. But I think the Community Engagement Committee is going to be doing a lot more of that work.
Very good, very good. Yes, Mr. Hartman, please, if you could go over to the microphone.
Michael Hartman, Two Court Gardenway. Dr. Rosado brought up the fact that there were no Native Americans on the commission. And I'm wondering if any applicants self-identified as Native American?
No.
Okay. And it seems to me that some, and you may have gone to these resources, I don't know. But certainly the Native American Advisory Committee at Goddard has knowledge about local folks. And the chances are that they might live in Greenbelt. Or I don't know if Bark has a, any, any advisory committees. But if they do, then they might have some, some opportunities of either going to, like at Goddard, going to the Native American Advisory Committee or going through them to seek out folks who live in Greenbelt. Also, there's two associations in the area, American Indian Science and Engineering Society and the Society of American Indian Government Employees. And the local chapters of those may also be a good resource for identifying. for identifying people who live in or near Greenbelt. Some of the members of the Advisory Committee, of the Native American Advisory Committee at Goddard, and I was a liaison to that committee when I worked there, the EEO office, are the Piscataway Conoy Tribe and the Piscataway American Nation. And there were people on the committee who were members of those two organizations. So, anyway, I don't know if you've done a lot of research trying to find folks, or let them know that you exist, but as you know very well, where you reach out to people, how you reach out to people determines your success in finding them. And reaching out to where people are that you're looking for, that's the best way than doing a general kind of a, we're here, come join us. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, appreciate the input and the suggestions. You know, I think, city, we did, I believe we actually extended the deadline in looking for individuals to try and get that number. So we used contacts, we ran ads in the Greenbelt News Review, we talked to people, we asked people to talk to people that they knew. I think having that connection with the Smithsonian Museum of Native American History and Culture is a good connection, and the Piscataway Convoy convening that I'm aware of, and that other people are aware of, they are active. So let me ask the question. So just in terms of the composition of the commission at this time, there's been a great deal of continuity. I believe there's been maybe one, maybe two resignations, and we had, Mr. Hurling was on initially, but when he came back on to council for a brief period, he stepped off. So do we need to appoint additional individuals, or is, working with an alternate, is that something that would be helpful, or it's something you don't need?
I would like us to wait to see if we can identify some Indigenous people. Michael, I heard what you were saying, and maybe if the, even if they don't live in Greenbelt, if the council would be willing to appoint.
Liaison or something.
A liaison or advisor, that I think that would make a difference.
Okay, well, what else do you need from us?
Oh, we'll give you a list.
Please. Well, what I'd like to ask is, you know, I really do think that having periodic check-ins is important, and you've had some time to kind of get organized. So not just for council, but just for the public as a whole, to kind of hear about the progress and the really challenging work that you're doing right now, and just looking back and looking forward at Greenbelt, and looking what needs to happen so that we're all whole. So appreciate the work that's being done, appreciate the time commitment to Megan Searing Young as our staff liaison, and, you know, just all of us kind of working to support your efforts. It's not an easy lift, but, you know, it's something that needs to be done, and, you know, there's no, and I'll say it again, there's no hard time stop on this work. You know, I wasn't expecting the commission to hand us a report in a year, because a report is probably not what we need. We really need to collectively kind of focus in, and, you know, call out these, call out these issues and work with them, so there's no time constraint. You did say 2025, though, right?
But, you know.
You said that, right?
Yes, we did. We're working toward that.
Very, very good. Appreciate the chance. Mr. Hurling.
And that is, when we're talking about getting the word out to get more input from the community, the Greenbelt News Review, of course, is a priceless resource for our community. But we're looking and exploring different possible ways to get the word out to a greater percentage of people in the community. I did get in touch with the mayor, the mayor, the city manager, I'm sorry, and he said that the city has a listing, I think it was of like 16,000.
We're at almost 19,000 now.
19,000.
Well, almost.
18,001.
That could be part of us building that connection with the other things that we've been talking about as well.
Right. Yeah, and with the outreach committee, the webpage, but, you know, this work that Tribessi is going to do, I think it really needs to be informed with the needs, or the aspirations, or just some of the guidance of the reparations commission, because, you know.
We're willing to meet, we're willing to meet with them, to hear where we can, you know.
And they've been on, so they heard what you had to say tonight, too, because they're on Zoom.
Councilmember.
Yes, one more suggestion. The Maryland State Arts Council has a land acknowledgement working group led by Ryan Coons. Have you been in touch? Okay, perfect, that just came to my mind. Okay, great, thanks.
Are there some other state resources you've been tapping into?
Well, the Maryland Archives, we've spoken with Chris Haley and Hannah Lane.
Commission that he's.
But we are just tapping into the Maryland Native American Commission, and that's the only one right now.
Is, on the county level, is there any work being done that?
Not that we know of, but.
That's surprising.
We haven't looked, yeah.
Yes, and then Robert.
Robert Goldberg Strassler, 114, last night. What you're referring to at the state level is the Truth and Reconciliation Commission that was set up, they were also set up with no funding. So they're scrambling for anything. Prince George's County has not been started among their work, based to my knowledge.
Shocking. Yes, Mayor Porter.
There was a comment from Luis Weisman emailed, commenting that the National Museum of the American Indian has a repatriation department. Would it be worth reaching out to their staff? Wasn't the, wasn't somebody, the one of the reparations commission member was on staff at that museum? I don't know, yeah, so.
She was.
She was?
So it sounds, so she may have connections there, that may be something you've already looked into.
But we're specifically targeting, we're specifically looking at Piscataway people that were, and the Federation members that were in this area.
Right. Yeah, they're probably, they probably have a much broader mandate.
Tom, please.
Under the resource, this discussion reminded me that Bob Rand and I attended a Zoom meeting of the, it was a Prince George's Economic Justice Group that is funded by the community foundation and some of the larger foundations, and so it sounds like there may be foundation money at play, and so we may want to, as we get into this, think about how that might be relevant.
Yeah, now that you mention it, you know, I'm sure that there is foundation money available, and even, you know, locally, the Greenbelt Community Foundation is open for grants, and those grants are up to $5,000, and, you know, I think all you have to do is ask and write a good proposal with good rationale, and so. Well, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you're doing. And is there an activity, another workshop or program, public program, coming up in the next four or five months?
Yeah, Community Engagement Committee is going to be putting together a schedule of activities. So we do want to do a lot of outreach to the public, hear from the public, as well as educate the public on what we've learned, so that will happen. They were just recently put together, so that will happen soon.
Very, very good. Hey, are there any other questions online, comments online? I see a hand, Mr. Orleans, are you there?
Thank you, the Orleans. I heard what I believe to be, have been a very bad suggestion raised earlier in the meeting. Since there was no affirmative response to it, I presume that suggestion has expired. That suggestion being that maybe they would want to have a council liaison attend their meetings. Of course, council, if they choose, could attend their meetings, but that would be a very bad idea. The commission should be left to do its work without any more interference or involvement from the establishment in town that already exists, I believe, on the commission. But I hope that idea, as called it, it's appropriate way. It has been pointed out to the commission several occasions, and I've been in each of their meetings, except one which was not announced in the news review three weeks ago, I leave on a Thursday, that the commission may be creating a problem for itself in that meetings of the subcommittees in the past, they've been assured by the city solicitor, need not be open to the public. Now, it may be that nobody in the public, say, would want to go to those meetings of the subcommittees, but I believe at some point, the commission is going to be reporting out potentially some action that the city council should directly be taken. And at that point, if someone can claim that the commission was doing its work somewhat in secret, somewhat behind closed doors, it could create a problem for any positive, affirmative requests the commission would make of council and of the city. And I would suggest that since they're basing that decision on advice from the city solicitor, for among other reasons, the city solicitor should come to a public meeting with the commission and be, have the opportunity to be as directly as the whether or not it should continue to be appropriate to have meetings where the public is not invited. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to that? I don't think, do you have meetings where the public's not invited?
The subcommittees are not a quorum, and everything that is done in the subcommittees is reported out to the full commission, so anyone attending the commission meeting gets the same reports of what was discussed in the subcommittee. And any comments that the public wants to make, they're free to make them to the entire commission. But we follow the open meeting.
Meeting Act.
And we don't have a quorum, and we need to get work done. And we're not publishing every time we have a meeting, unless we're required to.
With the working groups or subgroups that might form in the future, just in terms of structure, would there be opportunities for individuals who are not appointed to the commission to participate?
I don't see why not.
I should say that, Ms. Pop.
So I'm just wondering, your subcommittees, how do they meet? Are they meeting in a public?
They're meeting online, Zoom.
On Zoom?
Yeah, we're just on Zoom.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering, I don't know, but maybe Mr. Samron, one knows, if they have to be open to the public as well.
Maybe meetings?
Yes.
No.
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 They're not making any decisions on behalf of the commission. They're carrying out the work, doing the research. They're not, there's no work outside of that that's happening outside of the commission itself. So when we have our broader commission meetings, which are open to the public, all of the information that is happening in a subcommittee is shared. Any decisions that need to be made are made at the full commission level.
Right, right, and I understand that. I just, I just was wondering what the particular rule is on that.
It's not a, it's not a meeting of the body, there's no quorum, so there's no need to have a public meeting.
Okay, and I guess you can advertise, because it's like, as you have, as your volunteers have time, right?
Yeah.
And sometimes it will be, you know, hey, when can we all meet? And it might be just two days later.
And just two people.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, in case somebody.
Think, you know, if necessary, maybe we, there's someone in the Maryland Municipal League that we can consult with on the Open Meeting Act. I'm just saying.
We may know somebody, but on this topic, our solicitor did within and provided commentary on the questions raised by the commission. Before they held those meetings, they reached out to our office and asked, could they meet, could they have these subcommittee meetings without announcing them and having them open to the public? So we did go through the legal review of that request, and we provided a response.
Thank you so much. Mr. Samron, Ms. Tyra, or Megan, do you have any comments that you'd like to provide? Yes, we're about to move it along. If not, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Welcome back, Conrad. You're a temporary staple, that's what you are.
Okay, so we've got another two items on the agenda. It's 8:30 now, so what's council's will? Do you want to focus on Tribessi for about, until about 9 o'clock?
That wouldn't be, longer than that, do you?
Okay, okay.
Processing what they're going to do, so.
Their presentation wasn't super long, it didn't look like.
Okay, well, fantastic, let's go ahead and move to the next section of the agenda. Ms. Smith, would you like to kind of frame things? And I guess Tribessi's on the line, do you want to introduce who's on the line?
Yes, so we have our two consultants online, Rena and Gail, working with Tribessi Consulting. So as you all know, we just finished up Phase One of our internal DEI audit, and have transitioned into Phase Two of our audit, which will focus on our community assessment and doing our work with the Jedi Action Team. So just a little context about Phase Two. I just want to stress the importance of, you know, the community involvement. It's something that we were hearing all along the way while we were doing Phase One, and now that we're transitioned into Phase Two, I just want to reiterate that we quite literally cannot do this work and achieve these DEI goals that we're working towards without hearing from the community. Specifically, you know, we want to hear the experiences of those who typically haven't been asked about their opinions, or don't engage much with council. It's been, we've been trying to get innovative and creative with our outreach in reaching the community members who we don't typically hear from. And so Tribessi is just going to come on, they're going to go over the importance of this work, why we need to hear the community voices, and they most definitely do need to be included into our decision-making processes, especially as we're looking to build a strategic plan for the city. We need that internal step, in addition to that external, the resident voices, in order to make sure that, you know, moving forward, our initiatives, our policies, our structures are rooted and centered in the community. So they're going to go over their process, like I said, the importance of this work, and then what we can expect within this scope of Phase Two. So with that, I will pass it over to Tribessi.
Hey, good evening, Tribessi, how you doing?
We're doing wonderful. It's nice to be here with you all. Want to say good evening to the mayor, good evening to council, and good evening to the city of Greenbelt. As you all know, I'm a Marylander, so it's awesome to be sort of at home with my folks, so. Pleasure to be here.
Fantastic, fantastic. So you've got a presentation on Phase Two.
We do, we do. So not quite sure, Tyra, is the presentation up?
Working.
There's a link to it in the agenda.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So this is a continuation that we talked about just a little bit last time we did. By the way, if my light goes in and out, there aren't folks from the afterlife visiting me. I have a short in my lamp, so I apologize ahead of time if my light goes in and out. So just to let you all know, it may do that during this presentation. However, we talked about Phase Two a little bit in our presentation about Phase One, and there were some folks, some residents from city of Greenbelt, talking about the importance of getting lived experiences and perspectives from the city, and it even gave some ideas about how to reach those who are normally not engaged for various reasons with this, works of the city, right, and the duties of the city. So we want to outline a quick presentation to you all in terms of how we are going about this process. We've been working with Tyra and the city manager and others to try to put together a strategy around engaging those folks. If you could please change your frame.
So we were brought on to do a complete and thorough audit of the city using a Jedi lens, which again stands for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so as Rena mentioned, Phase One was the internal audit, if you will, around employee culture and city structure. The community impact audit is an integral part of the entire audit process. Because we recognize that, you know, as a city, you're a mix of both historical and current practices. And that residents, businesses, and visitors are all impacted in different ways by both the structure of the city and policies and practices. As well as the culture of employees and how they engage with folks. And so a community impact audit, and you'll notice it's not just in. Gathering community views, it's about the impact of city structure and the impact of of culture on the community. And that's a really important focus and component of an overall audit. Because it allows you to determine not just what the intent of, say, a particular policy or practices, but really what is the impact? And if the impact is not what people not what was intended, that's an important component to know. Next slide.
So there's a real purpose and you all talked about the the purpose of this community impact audit, as well as Tyra talked about it. We want to give you some examples of of why this is extremely important to the decision making process. Of the city as well as the development of a strategic plan around justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. I just want to add that whatever questions a reparations committee needs could be part of easily incorporated into. Part of this community impact audit as well. And so we're happy to meet with them to to figure out some topics. That we could get the stories for for that group as well. But as you know, just individuals and groups are having very different experiences in the city for various reasons. And those come with stories, stories that are not always articulated when data is given. And so individuals and groups can experience generational trauma from historical and current city practices. And that's why it's very easy to incorporate what the reparations committee is doing into phase two. The focus on groups that are most vulnerable, minoritized and marginalized. And and those who least engage in the city. It is really important to understand their lived experiences as these days. Particularly young people are having very, very different experiences. And when I say young. I'm establishing that as thirty five and under are having very different experiences, period, out in the world. But specifically in the city of Greenbelt. And the community impact audit will determine ways communities and groups are affected directly and indirectly by the city systems. And it will help to get to root causes of current outcomes. So in other words, you may have a negative impact that's happening now or an unintentional negative impact that's happening now. And those stories help to get to the root cause of of some of those outcomes. It also provides a basis for transformative change, much like phase one. It gives you a baseline to see, okay, as we've made some changes. What is the impact to the community that is positive, where you may have had a negative impact before? Taking a look at surveys and focus groups and additional ways of communicating with the community in the future. This gives you a baseline of what how to compare the work that you are going to do in the future with the impact in the future. You could change a slide, please.
So this is a reminder of the overall process. Again, in in organizational change based in Jedi. It is important to recognize that you kind of have to do Jedi as you're leading to an outcome of Jedi. So these are the components that are important. This is not in any particular order or sequence. This is not frequently things happen overlapping. And so considering some of the things that were shared by the reparations commission. It would be important, for example, as you create a roadmap around aligning your city structures and and culture and practices. With justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion concepts. That that not be separate, say, from some of the things that the reparations commission is looking for. Skill building. Skill building would be around understanding how to have these conversations. How to go about creating change in different ways. Having awareness and understanding of impact. We find that that's a component that's really lacking in 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 most municipalities that we work with. There's a lot of focus on what we're trying to do and an intent, but not necessarily skill and awareness around. How do I solicit and understand impact? And of course, the historical context is always very important because the past is not just in the past. The past is is happening today. And so understanding those contexts really matters. So again, this is just a reminder of these are all important and integral components to an overall organizational change. And should any of these components be missing, and you can go to the next slide. Or not well developed, you end up with things that you didn't intend. So we find that that sometimes organizations we work with were called in because they get stuck. They get stuck on this kind of hamster wheel of, you know, they tried something. And they tried what they believe they, you know, they already know how to do certain things. And they just end up starting and stopping and starting and stopping, and they get stuck in this place. And that's usually because they haven't developed all of these components which are necessary for organizational change. So you can go to the next slide.
So the phase two process follows, this may be a little bit familiar for you, but it follows again. The Tribestie pillars of healing, truth and knowledge journey. And there has to be actual change that that happens at the end of this journey. Particularly for those who are marginalized, minoritized, or vulnerable in the process. Because they may have lived experiences that create distrust, particularly for local governments. And so we're doing a process presentation now. Then we will prepare for our dialogue sessions. We'll talk about some of the topics in a minute and who we're targeting. We'll actually engage across the city with volunteers. And that's what we're calling our community dialogue sessions. And these sessions, I know we're using the term focus groups. But quite frankly, they're just like conversations in a living room. We bring up topics, we get folks to tell us stories, we take copious notes of the words they use and what they the stories they've chosen to tell us about. And we give you an analysis of that of that impact. Where the root causes are coming from as identified by the the committee. And also where places that Jedi is being done, you may not call it that. But places where Jedi is actually being done and and where the city should continue to use those practices and those policies. That will, as with phase one, result in a report that has strengths and gaps, opportunities. And threats with the city. And the impact of all three of those reports, which is the structural assessment, the cultural assessment. By the way, I want to answer the question about city code. We did review city code. And there was a recommendation within the structural section of the report that talks about reviewing the the code. So for example, there's parts of your code that are in the default masculine language. So we did review city code.
Well, the need for a review, we've been trying to do that for about four years.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to answer that question because it seemed like folks weren't sure if we reviewed city code and we did. And it will result in a report presentation, much like we did before, to give you that analysis. If you could go to the next frame, please.
So in this preparation process for the facilitated dialogues, the the most crucial component really is. How do we identify the groups that are, you know, not generally at, say, a council meeting? They're not the ones who are generally you all have contact with and interaction with. We're we're looking for those groups that you don't hear their voice, right? And so that means that we can't necessarily go through and use the same processes and the same ways of advertising or promoting. That the city may typically do because we're trying to reach the folks that you don't normally reach, right? And so that means going through and identifying community contacts and community groups. Figuring out locations that are easily accessible so that people don't have to travel very far to to get to a location. So that component is is really crucial to to then having folks actually show up, right? You know, it's not a matter of advertise and they will come. No, you actually have to organize for them to come, right, which is a different way of thinking about it. So then we'll be doing community dialogue sessions in different parts of the city. Again, to allow for access as well as virtual sessions. And along with the demographic survey, that'll give us a lot of both qualitative data and quantitative data. And so some of the topics that we look for when we're having these conversations and engaging with community members. Is to talk about, you know, basically, what are their experiences? What's the the positive parts about living in Greenbelt? What are the negative aspects? What interactions do they have with the city? Experiences around isms that may exist that impact them personally or impact their family. Is there a sense of physical safety? Are there gaps that exist in the city in terms of services and things that would really positively impact them? Do they have a sense of inclusion and belonging, a feel a sense of community, right? So there's a lot of different topics that we're looking at. And so we can certainly incorporate some of the things that the reparations commission may be looking for. In terms of the impacts of 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 services and and programs and policies over time.
Next slide, please. Thank you. So when we talk about qualitative data, we want to make sure and make clear what qualitative data is. In short, it's the stories behind the data. The human brain is wired for stories and it gives us in-depth lived experiences. It gives us in-depth gaps. It gives us in-depth impact. And it gives us perspectives and ideas that we may not understand without those stories. So folks may bring ideas and a lot of times we don't say, hmm, what what's the root of your idea, right? And that's when you get the stories from experiences that those who do not engage with the city most often. Have on a regular basis. The qualitative data you'll see there provides crucial context and humanizes data. Often, we say the state of Maryland is stereotyped as statisticians. So we have lots of data and are taught how to analyze data. Often, human the humanizing of that data is lacking, not only in the state, but around the country. And so it's important to understand those experiences, whether you personally have those experiences or not. Those experiences are happening and to to validate them as real experiences. And then to incorporate those experiences in decision making and in planning.
Next slide, please. So our timeline, we've been currently working on locations and contacts and and how to reach out to different aspects of the community. That's been ongoing. The community dialogue sessions are currently scheduled for August. And then we would hope to have a presentation to you all by December. So that's the the short timeline. And you can go to the next slide.
So these outcomes, you know, we've part of community organizing is a little recognizance work. And so Tribestie has been doing that, talking to various people who have either lived in Greenbelt or currently lived in Greenbelt. And just been asking the question, who do we need to talk to? And so we're formalizing those folks, those folks who who may feel marginalized, who may feel vulnerable. Or those who may feel as if they that that the policies of the city of Greenbelt do not assist them in engaging. In in the government, right, in local government decisions. And so you'll get a greater community engagement and voice of those groups. You'll also understand some cultural, structural, and community impact. Impact so that it sets the foundation for your strategic plan. I think what's really important in 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 all of this is that you will have perspectives you have not had before. And that data is essential in decision making and processing. So you hear some conversations that are happening here. And one of the tenets of justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion is for allow for each group to tell their own story. And so if you have groups that have not been able to, or for various reasons, cannot tell their own story. It is part of the city government to try to engage and solicit those stories as much as possible. And all of this allows you to align your structure and your culture to the Jedi lens, right? The lens that you will be creating, how do you make sure and align your structure, culture, and behavior? To the Jedi lens in everything that you do on a daily basis. And that input from those who are most marginalized is extremely, extremely important.
You can.
I think that's it.
Yeah, I think that's the so you can stop sharing if you want, and I don't know if you have any questions or comments.
Well, you know, thank you for the presentation. So in listening to the presentation, you know, focus on the city, the city staff. And how how it relates to the community. So at the same time, you know, as a council member, we have two year terms. And every two years and more often, we're we're out talking to the community all the time. So I knock on doors, I talk to people all the time. So when you talk about. Underserved, marginalized groups, you know. As as an individual, I'm out talking to people all the time. So I mean, this information really, really important, really, really helpful. I'm concerned that what the reparations commission is doing, what we've charged them to do. And they're working so so hard. I really want to make sure that there's no overlap. I don't want to. Going out two or three times seeking the same information. Something else that we do, and it's it's, you know, not as. Not as thorough, really not as scientific as as it could be, is, you know, with our elections, people, there's a community survey that goes out every two years. And of course, it's sort of self-selecting. The people that take the time to fill it out are the ones that are recorded. And I don't know, have we gotten the results of the last city survey?
No, we have not. We checked with the UMD Center who's doing the research and analysis. And we were expecting the the report at the end of May, and we received an email this week that they do not have a timeline for us. But hope to get to it as soon as possible.
But, you know, Greenbelt, twenty five thousand people, it's a manageable size. So for the council members that that have been on council for quite some time, we pride ourselves in talking to people. Hearing the stories, sharing the ideas and, you know, listening, you know, throughout the year. And with two year terms, it's like we're doing that. But for city staff, pretty new city staff, I think that this process is really, really helpful. And let's see, Mayor Proton or Ms. McKinney, which would you go?
Well, I think that's true, but I don't think we get a representative sample for not certainly not probably not knocking on doors. And I know not with the survey. I also think that. I think we need to look at a different way to do that survey because waiting seven months to get results. It may be that we need to have somebody else facilitating that for us because that's just that's that's taking too long. But I guess.
Totally agree with that.
Well, but so I guess my 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 point is, and I think so what what I wonder about is, it looked like you were planning. I know you've been doing some some preliminary surveys to try to get like timing and places and things like that. But it but it still seems like, are you doing sort of like scheduling something and inviting people to come? Or will you also be doing sort of just go out and and talk to people who are at Tromhills Park? With their kids playing at the playground and do some so that, I guess, more of going to people rather than having them come to you. Even if you're trying to reduce barriers so that they can come to you easily. Are you still also going to do some going to the people?
Yes, so Tribestie likes to call them drive bys, but they will be going out in the community. And grocery stores, parks, laundromats, wherever to the community to have these more kind of. and grocery stores, parks, laundromats, wherever, to the community to have these more kind of informal settings to talk in addition to the focus groups and survey.
One thing to think about might be to extend those conversations through at least Labor Day weekend because although again, that may not be a truly representative sample of Green Belt and there are certainly people from outside Green Belt who come to our Labor Day festivities. A lot of people come and gather for Labor Day weekend. So that could be a good opportunity to potentially talk to quite a few people relatively efficiently.
We'll also be, I just reached out to, got confirmation from PD about having a table at the National Night Out event. I know that brings a big turnout of the community. So we'll have people out there to, to talk to the residents.
Yeah, I think, I think using events that are already happening and already gathering large groups of people could be a good way to do it. And I don't know also if, if there's any back-to-school events that'll be happening. Now, those may not all be Green Belt residents because that, the schools have more than that. But that could be another opportunity of people already gathering for other reasons.
Councilmember McKinney.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts and then questions. Well, I do think that there is some, there are some things that the reparations committee is looking at as well as Tribasi. I do think the objectives are different and equally important. So I think, excuse me, the reparations commission is trying to look at what might have, have been documented or trying to document what might have happened to those in the community in the past and how we can right those wrongs. But I also look at, Tribasi is looking at a much wider look at what our culture is, what our standards are, what our processes, and how do we engage people in different ways? So I don't want to oversimplify the two different groups and their work because they're equally important. And I want to make sure we're doing justice to both by creating the space. And even if they are talking to the same people, being clear about the objectives for each is going to be important so that we get the report back that meets both objectives because both are important. So that's, that's my first question or my first comment. My second is more of a question around the August timeframe. I think that's great, but I also think that that's still also summertime. So we might be losing people that are still on summer vacations and breaks. So I do agree that look, using an event like Green Belt Labor Day Festival as well as potentially going into September when people are back into kind of their swing and what are doing, you know, schools back in session, people are here, might be important to be able to go in and leverage the time that they are here. I'd also want to make sure that we're engaging with groups where we might see a wider diversity of representation. So we have a lot of churches in our community. And so more of a question, have we reached out to those communities? And maybe there are, there are events in those churches that we can leverage those events to be able to connect with them as well?
So I actually just yesterday and today reached out to Zion in Green Belt because I know they have a large attending there. And then also just need to look into some other churches of other denominations as well to reach out to them.
Can I add that we have been talking about a strategy, it's the evening, strategy to connect with those who do not engage. And part of our reconnaissance identified specifically young people. They specifically identified those who identify as African, those who identify as African-American and those who identify as Latina, Latino, Latinx, Hispanic backgrounds. And so it's important to go where those folks are. So I think the Mayor Protem was talking about instead of having people come to us. So we are looking at restaurants, we're looking at hotels, we are looking at various places around the city where we can easily ask for groupings of those folks to come by. We've even talked about connecting with Prince George's Community College to see how they can help us to connect to students that may be residents of the city of Green Belt. So those are some of the things that we are doing to try to connect with folks that have been identified as those who may fit into the categories we talked about earlier.
One more to add on to that are the local businesses, particularly in like Beltway Plaza. That's such a really nice mix of diverse businesses there. So there might be some connections we can use there as well.
I got the contact information for the property manager there. And then also today I did a deep dive on TikTok and identified some locations that I saw people frequent in Beltway Plaza.
That is not a source of research that would have occurred to me.
Yeah, because you know, the youngins, they like TikTok. So I assume that they would post content there that would be valuable to us, so.
I gotta tell you, one of my priorities, you know, circling back to the city survey, and it's something that I brought up, I guess it was a little late in the game. But, you know, for quite some time, I've really wanted to get a comprehensive community visioning activity going. Not an activity, but just actually to knock on every single door and talk to people. To use, mobilize our volunteers, maybe pay them a little bit with ARPA funding to actually not just check in on Jedi, but to just see how people are doing with food and shelter, how they relate to the city, how they relate to one another. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can do this kind of a thing and not be redundant. It seems like we're doing a lot of outreach, a lot of outreach is important. But big picture, you know, we do need to talk to everybody, not leave anybody behind. So with the churches, you know, a lot of people who live in Green Belt go to churches outside of Green Belt, like Zion, even more so Reed Temple, which is one of the biggest AME churches in the area. So, you know, it's hard doing outreach, but I want to make sure that this effort is coordinated so that the information that we gather is useful. And so I'm more concerned, and I want to make sure that there's good communication because I think our reparation efforts and just our citywide efforts to have visioning and to talk to everybody, you know, check in with everybody after COVID, see how everybody's doing. I think it's important. It's a diverse city and you've identified some groups that are somewhat marginalized. It was just at an event with several of the council members over at the middle school. It's incredibly diverse, Filipino community, West African, Cameroonian, Jamaican, it's incredibly diverse. But that's Green Belt and we've been incredibly diverse for quite some time. It's no surprise that this is a diverse, predominantly African-American city. And it's been that way for 15, 20 years. Comments, yes, Ms. Davis, please.
Jay Davis, Green Belt East. One thing I want to ask, because it was said when we had the report from Phase One, that there would be a work session where the community would be informed and would be able to ask questions about the report from Phase One as there seemed to be a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of anxiety and a lot of hard feelings and bad words. And so far I have not seen that work session be scheduled. And I think you almost need to do that before you start doing Phase Two. So somewhere in between, you're going to have to do that. My second thing is, I mean, I know that the reparations commission could use some of the expertise of Tribasi, but they're dealing with the African-American and Native American population. And this is going to be dealing with far more diversity than that. I realize that that is a large, especially with the African-Americans, a large percentage. But we do have a large percentage of Hispanic, a large percentage of Asian-Americans. And before someone says, well, the Asian-Americans are not marginalized, don't say that. They have been marginalized quite a bit in the past couple of years. Not perhaps financially, but psychologically. There's also the LGBTQ and I know it got too many letters in there somewhere, but that community, also the special needs community, we have a large deaf community. So you could go into so many different groups. So I'm very concerned of how fine-tuned and how much outreach that they're going to do for all of these groups. We have immigrant group, you can even say that there are women's group, seniors. I mean, there's so many different groups and how you're going to reach each of those. Now, my third thing, and I'm going to be sure about my time here. Yes, as city council people, you do go to events, you do door knock, though mostly you're door knocking on registered voters. And you are talking to people in the stores and so on. But there is a large part of Green Belt that you are not meeting because they don't come to events. They won't answer the door when you knock on the door, especially if they're immigrants or if they have some other issues. How many of you have gone door knocking and you can do 10, 15 doors? Nobody's home, nobody answers. So we're missing a large part of what maybe is impacting the community. So I'm hoping this is a way of finding out. But I think we must make sure that it is reaching out to all of the impacted groups, not just one or two or three.
Hey, hey, is there anybody online?
There are no raised hands and no questions in the Q and A online.
Anybody here? Does anyone say anything? Yeah, please.
Good evening, I'm Peggy Higgins. I live in Windsor Green and I want to thank you all for all the meetings that you attend and your energy on behalf of the city. I just had a thought when we were talking about August and Labor Day, back-to-school night. If you're talking about 35 and younger, then a lot of those people you could get in terms of parents. And my thought would be that the, I mean, you know, I'm not part of it, but the Education Advisory Committee has good relationships with each one of those schools. The city gives those schools grants. I would think they'd be willing to put a table out that says Green Belt and, you know, impact that way. And then the other thing is, is that the city gave, connecting across Green Belt, an ARPA grant for doing surveys as well. And they're using young people to knock on the doors. I'm not quite sure where Nirvan is on that, but that's another thing to kind of take a lead on. Thanks. Oh, bus stops, those bus stops, those first week in school, those parents are going to be all over those bus stops.
That's definitely true. Okay.
Might be willing to have a chat while they're waiting for the bus.
Okay, let's see. Former, Jay Davis brought up a good point about work session. That's something we haven't been able to schedule because our schedule's pretty tight. We really do need to do that with Tribasi. The timeframe, it sounds like you guys are already working pretty hard on this, right?
We're waiting on the funding to be available in the next few fiscal, in the new fiscal year to move forward with the contract. So council approved the budget, but we can't spend that until comes July 1st. So we're waiting for that authorization.
Tribasi, do you have any ask of council?
I think it would be great if council had, since you all are knocking on the doors and hearing some stories, if you could target those who may have expressed to you for a multitude of reasons who feel most vulnerable or marginalized in the community, to get either those names or groups or people who have some, some far-reaching touchpoints with others to Tyra. And that could help us to reach some of those folks that you've had some conversations with, particularly those who in various ways may have told you that they are vulnerable, marginalized or minoritized.
Well, thank you, definitely we'll do that. Just thinking off the top of my head, you know, there are folks in our committee, the community that literally, they literally are hiding, you know, they are perhaps immigrants that have not, are not here legally and there are folks that are living in situations where they have housing vouchers and things and they are literally not willing to really come out. But I just think it's really, really important to try and reach everybody throughout the city. Yes, councilmember.
Yeah, as far as Tribasi was just asking about people to connect them with, maybe we could connect them with the Community Relations Advisory Boards since they really are ear to the ground. They may have some good leads for them as well about who specifically to speak with and that kind of stuff. Because that's a pretty representative group of the city, so.
I think, I think that's a good idea. If we can quickly actually reach out to all of the advisory boards, but quick, with the emphasis on quickly to get some input on that, it might be, we might get some good suggestions. Probably would, I'm sure we'd get some great suggestions. Back off. So Tribasi, thank you for your good work. And we'll, you know, through Tyra, through the city manager, if we could possibly set up some sort of a presentation to the broader community with the Phase One reports and kind of talk through that in a work session at some point over the summer, that would be really, really helpful, I think.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, please.
The goal of that session, considering that we did do an in-depth presentation before of that report, what, what would be the, I mean, because we would give the same information, that information has changed. So what, what our purpose would be during, during that meeting? And I don't mean that in a sarcastic way. I'm really wondering to make sure to bring the information that you all want us to bring. But really the information hasn't changed in the, in the report.
Right, right. Well, I guess in a way you could maybe kind of frame it the way that you framed doing the outreach, you know, so that you can kind of tell, hear the, hear the stories, tell the stories, hear the voices and, you know, instead of just reporting out to council in some sort of a different setting, perhaps away from a municipal building and in a public setting, just finding a way to actually reach, reach out more broadly. City manager.
I'm sorry, I was just, I was also just questioning that as well because this was a, you know, Phase One was the internal city audit. So this was, these are the lived experiences of our staff. So I'm not sure, are we trying to get community input on the lived experiences? Like, I'm just not sure. I feel like we're opening the door for people to sort of complain about experiences. Like, I just, I don't understand what the, what the point of that would be. It happened and now we're sort of moving into Phase Two. And there will be an education process that will, you know, some people were concerned about language or they didn't understand this and that. But, you know, Ms. Smith is working on a document that has a lot of resources in it that will help those people as we move through the phase where we're engaging the public. I just don't want our staff to feel like they're being put sort of under the gun, you know? This was, everything was confidential and they shouldn't have to feel like their experiences are being questioned. And that would be my concern.
That's a really good point. Jay Davis, you kind of brought it up.
Well, and while Jay's going to the microphone, I think the other thing that's true is this next round of community outreach is an opportunity for other people to share their own experiences that may be different from the ones that staff shared. So there, now the terminology question may be a different one, but, but there is an opportunity for other people to share things that may be different than what the staff shared in the Phase One of the, of the audit.
Jay Davis, again from Green Belt East. What I'm hearing from folks is, and again, it's possible that people didn't pay close attention when it was first presented. And by the time they got the actual report, it wasn't what they thought it was going to be or they thought it was too critical of city staff and city policies. And they were concerned about some of the terminology, which really does need to be explained. Because if you're not used to using that terminology, it can come across as a negative thing and no one wants to be treated in a negative way. And it came out to be like we were blaming a certain segment of the staff for all of the ills that the city was experiencing. And I don't think that that is what you wanted to come across. So this particular work session would simply be. would simply be maybe to re-explain the goals and the purpose, and how you came, how you got all of the data. You don't have to go into specifics. You don't have to say, this person said this, or this department said that. Basically just say, this is how we came across, and this is what we are reporting. These, this is the truth. This is what we found. And explain some of the terms so that people understand. Then I think that will make it easier to go into the phase two part, because then they'll understand some of the processes, processes and ways of what you're doing.
Yeah, Ms. Pope?
Yeah, I think it's not just, you know, not just respond, but maybe have a dialogue too, because the language was, I, I heard, I got a lot of feedback on that, and it, and it wasn't good. It was not positive. So, so, and I think we want to avoid that, because we don't want to do one thing that we think is really good, we should do it, we have to do it, but in the same time alienate some others. So I think that's a, that's a thin line we're walking. So therefore, I agree with Jade Davis. I think we really need to have a work session before we move on to phase two. So it gives the, the public and other, you know, people the opportunity to come in and, and, and also ask questions.
Well, maybe it's the council we need to kind of talk about a little bit, and then reach out and talk with Tribesi about how we might do. Because, you know, I hear council members, Pompey's point about not putting staff under a microscope, because it was really meant to, to unearth these feelings and perceptions and the history, what's going on, what's gone on here in Greenbelt. So there's a balance that we have to reach. So let's just put a pin in that and come back to it.
There was a question that somehow didn't come through.
Respond briefly. I just want to say, it takes a lot of courage for people to speak about, out about injustice in their workplace. That is a scary thing to do. And we should not have our staff thinking that, again, that we are sort of, that we don't believe them, or that the community needs more explanation for how they feel the way they feel and for what they've experienced. And as I said, I know Tyra is working on a whole document that talks all about this kind of language, and I just really believe that that will be part of phase two. I think that the city is already working through phase one now. Like, there's already, you know, I know a staff working group, and like, this is, it's a process that's already happening. So to happen, to have a work group about something that has already been published, and frankly, all the questions people have are answered in that document. And the report isn't a report that's critical of the city, like nobody, you know, this isn't Tribesi's opinion of our city. This is what our staffers experiencing here. So I just really want to focus on that. This isn't what somebody is saying about us or reporting out on us. This is what our staff experienced here. So I think that that's just a really important point, that this isn't Tribesi coming in and telling us what we're doing wrong or blaming people. This is our staff telling us what their experience is working for the city. So.
I appreciate that. We need to put a pin, we really need to move on.
There's a question, though, that didn't come through.
Okay, would someone like to read the question?
I'm going to read the question. It's from Bob Snyder, and it says, how can Tribesi claim the audit was comprehensive if only about 16% of staff completed the survey? It was more of a small sampling. That's a, that's a comment.
That's a comment. It's not a question. Okay. Councilmember McKinney, because we, we, you know, we really need to, there's another issue that's.
Yeah, I won't take too much time. I just, I would like to echo what council member Pompey is saying, and I do think moving forward into phase two, I do think that there can be some additional clarification provided in some of the language and what it means, some context. You can kind of provide a preface to what was learned in phase one and how that is guiding the direction in phase two. So I, I think providing clarity can be done with still moving into phase two and not questioning the, the experiences of the staff, and, and try to move forward in a, in a productive manner. I think that would be helpful.
The answer to everything is not a work session.
I want to thank council for their support of our staff. As a manager, I learned early on that you ask employees how they feel about the workplace, you have to be prepared to hear the truth. And we asked them how, what their experiences were in the workplace. This is their truth. And I'm supportive of what their experiences are, and I'm committed to making sure that as we move forward, that we do not repeat some of the practices and behavior that have existed in our, in our organization.
Well, thank you, thank you. Tribesi, thank you so much for your good work. And oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Orleans?
Thank you, Lawrence.
What'd you say?
There is no formal opportunity that I'm aware of for any Green Belt employee, whatever her or his grievance might be, to express that grievance and not be concerned with repercussions from even having expressed the grievance. Council has had before it a report from two of the advisory boards or committees for well more than a year now that it had been referred to each, that if council thought it would be a good thing to do, council should amend the charter recognizing the right of Green Belt employees to organize and bargain collectively. That council's chosen not to do so is not the reason I'm saying tonight. If Green Belt employees had that right, then each of those employees would have a formal process by which to express a grievance and have it resolved amicably. I wish council would correct its inaction for more than a year now and consider an amendment to our charter recognizing that right, and of course, amending, revising the code to stipulate that neither council nor city management would attempt to impede that right of Green Belt employees who are not now organized, to organize and bargain collectively. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You've just made several suggestions that were pretty inaccurate. So, but we really do. Sir, will you please sit down?
Would the mayor like to clarify my inaccuracies?
Sure, but would the mayor please clarify my inaccuracies? Well, you implied that, that the council is, is not supportive of collective bargaining, which is not accurate. So.
What I said was not by implication, by clearly stating that the council had the opportunity to respond affirmatively or not to the suggestion coming from two city advisory boards, the Employee Relations Board and the Community Relations Advisory Board, that council should choose to do so. It would be a good thing to do to amend our charter. Council has done nothing for well more than a year.
Mr.?
So we've been trying to find the time, the opportunity to review the charter for about five years. COVID happened, a couple of things did happen, so.
We have a work session scheduled.
Work scheduled, so.
Tribesi, thank you so much for your work. We need to, to move on. There's another topic that we really need to talk about this evening. So thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Is it okay for us to log off now? You don't need us anymore, correct?
No, we don't need you anymore.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening, everyone. Bye-bye.
Okay, Tyra Smith, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you all.
So, city manager, someone on, you know, a really, really big issue has come up today. We were just informed by the county that there are some changes that are being proposed to the support from Prince George's County for our volunteer firefighters. And this issue is just really, really, it's, it's a big deal. It's people's lives at stake, literally. So I don't know if you want to frame this, or we can talk to you directly. Chief Ray, so you got communication from Prince George's County, the chief, or who contacted you?
Good evening, mayor and city council, and those people in attendance and online. My name is Thomas Ray. I'm a volunteer chief of the Green Belt Volunteer and Rescue Squad Incorporated. To my right is President Greg Gelati. So as you're aware, I was notified by county fire chief of the removal of career personnel assigned to the Green Belt Volunteer Fire Station, Station 35 of June 30th. So what's that mean for citizens and visitors to our city? It means that there will be an inadequate fire and EMS service provided to them. The plan is also to pull county staffing from Brown Heights Company 14, Bowie Station 39, and the Bunker Hill Station 55. With that said, there is a potential for no EMS or fire coverage for these stations Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Without the Green Belt and Brown Heights and Branchville in service, this is a huge service gap to our area. The fire chief is relying on surrounding companies to cover this response area. Currently, our apparatus assigned to Green Belt is consistently in other box areas providing service due to those units already being on calls. For example, on a consistent, on a daily basis from Green Belt, our engine is in the 48th area off of Good Luck Road, you know, because they're on calls. So how would they cover our area if Brown Heights, Branchville, and ourselves are out of service? Another example, just in the past 24 hours, our BLS unit ran calls outside of the Green Belt area in Brown Heights and the Laurel area, due to those units either being on a call or out of service. To put that information to respective for EMS calls in Brown Heights, which stations are staffed and units and quarters, not on calls. There are four companies ahead of us on that run. So there was four companies either on another run, or a company was out of service, that we had to run that call. The call in Laurel, the companies prior to us running a call that normally run that call are Laurel Rescue 49, Laurel Fire Department 10, Billsville 31, Bowie 19, and the Calverton Station 41. This doesn't even include the mutual aid units available from Howard, Anarundel, and Montgomery County. By removing personnel from these stations planned, there is going to be even a bigger impact on EMS transport service to the citizens of Prince George's County that already exist. As you know, timely and accurate pre-hospital care provided to the citizens for medical emergency care. For cardiac arrest, survivability rate depends on early CPR and defibrillation AED. Is the county going to be able to provide the minimum standard of care for EMS calls with removal of personnel? This time, can we show that little video?
Sure, sure. Hey, what, what the, what the hell is the county thinking? I mean, I mean, this is one of the most densely populated parts of Prince George's County, this area here. And I, I don't understand why, how can they, you know, June the 30th, that's like three, two, three weeks from now.
It's a short timeframe.
It's a short timeframe. You know, our residents, they, they pay for the services. The county going to send each of our residents their, their fair share back from, from the money that we send the, the county? I mean, you know, there's a tax differential. They're going to pay us back or what?
Questions that all need to be asked. And I think the city manager tomorrow, we're meeting with representatives from 14. Unfortunately, I won't be there. President Gelati will be there in attendance to discuss some of those questions that you just presented.
Bourbon Heights are really negatively affected by this.
Absolutely.
So I think maybe we should also maybe talk to Bourbon Heights.
So we have, we have a couple of strategies. If you're ready for me to jump in.
It's on the line. It's on Zoom.
Oh, excellent.
I can move her to the panelist.
So we have a couple of tracks that we, we, we need to pursue on this. The, obviously, we're all concerned about what this means for public safety and for direct medical services. The, the video that, that the chief wants to show highlights how time-sensitive fire services are. Medical services are just as, as time-sensitive. There's the golden 10-minute rule. Someone has a cardiac issue, first 10, responding within 10 minutes determines the likelihood of that individual surviving a cardiac. So the, that aside, we need to, we're looking at two strategies to pursue. One is do an outreach to the county executives or, or representatives at the county level and having those conversations. The administrative teams, we're looking at exploring and leveraging the tax differential policy that's in place where we will be reimbursed 100% of the cost. So we could consider augmenting local staff to cover that, cover that medical and fire gap and be.
That, we need the money now. I mean, we don't, you know, I mean.
We don't want to wait.
Life or death. I mean.
Right, right. But I think, I think that before we go asking for the money, I think that we have to coordinate or explore the feasibility of augmenting our staff and how procedurally we would do that. The money, I think, if there's interest to explore that, the money, we could figure that part out. The reason I say, I say it's important to figure out the feasibility of augmenting the staff and hiring local staff is that one of the pressures that EMS, fire and EMS services is having, not just in our region, but throughout the country, is the availability of staff. One of the issues I spoke, I've spoke with, with Tyra Jackson just this, this afternoon. We happen to have a COG meeting scheduled already, and I, I shared my concerns. One of the concerns that the county has expressed their need for doing this is overtime and shortage that they're having in other areas. So they're trying to pinch, cover a different territory. So when we look at our own staffing, we'll, we'll need to consider the availability of staff. But that's something that we're going to explore tomorrow at 3:00. We're going to have an administrative team. We'll have the Bourbon Heights Fire Department, our fire department will, will talk through what options we have there.
That's crazy stuff. You know, the, the taxes that our residents pay, that's like a contract. They've paid for that support. They've paid for the services. So the county's just going to renege? I mean, come on. Mr. Roberts?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, I don't think that going after some money from the county is really a productive process at this point. I think we go after why they made this decision and, and how to reverse that decision. Because as far as I know, there was no process that we were involved in or notified of that, you know, the fire department, the volunteers apparently weren't any part of, you weren't part of any of the process where you were just called and told, you know, flatly this was going to happen, I assume.
Who called you anyway?
So.
County Fire Chief.
Yeah.
Chief Green, yes. So.
That's what we need to do. We need to find out why that happened. And I think the county executive is at the top of the list. The county executive is responsible for making sure that we get the services that we pay for. So that's the first road I want to go down to get this decision reversed, because otherwise, this is going to turn into a long-term problem.
So the information or implication of the removal is based on the summer staffing plan the county has put together, is to reduce overtime and the mandated over, holdovers for county personnel. But, you know, that shouldn't be our burden to take on as volunteers for the county fire chief removal from staffing from our stations, you know. The issue is directly resulted from mismanagement of personnel and budgeting. As the county fire department level, you know, that will negatively impact the safety, as you said, the citizens of Prince George's County and Green Belt as a whole.
Well, not just Green Belt, you know, the, the Beltway, and I mean, you guys are constantly responding to accidents on Baltimore, Washington Parkway and Beltway. And like you said, the equipment is, is being, you know, dispatched all over the place. And, you know, it's, it's Green Belt equipment. We, you know, council, we pay for that equipment. So I know there's been, you know, issues. There's a lot of, there's been tension, you know, between the volunteers and the, the career firefighters, the county for quite some time. Is, is this some sort of an outgrowth of things, issues over the equipment, or is it, is it, did the county just pass their budget a couple of days ago? Is it from the budget? Is it from the budget?
I think it's more of a personnel, as retention and, you know, recruitment on their behalf. You know, before, you know, people used to put in, you know, 30 years. Now they're retiring at 20, 25, or, you know, just quitting. You just don't like what's going on in the fire service. So retention on, on people getting paid is, you know, crucial. I mean, just imagine us doing it as free, you know? The recruitment and efforts that we have to go through, we not even get, you know, receiving funds. So removal of the staffing, like I said, June 30th, and it'll be reevaluated in October.
October, oh, that's not, that's not summer, that's way past summer.
So with, with the, you know...
So I, I didn't mean to fly off the handle, and I know you have a video to show, and council members have some questions. So is it important for us to look at the video now or do we...
I mean, it puts in a perspective how fire grows rapidly. So in FBA standards, it's eight minutes from time and dispatch to get on the scene. And you can see here, you know, eight minutes is too long, you know? So if we're out of service and the surrounding stations are out of service as well during the daytime, just take a look at this video and see what happens within three minutes.
What you're looking at is a fire that's starting on a corner of an apartment. On the, on the bottom right-hand corner is a timer, currently at 27 seconds, and it's to highlight how quickly the fire spreads and, and it's timing it with the timer that's at the bottom right-hand corner.
Picturing someone in, in a car with a fire. So if you want to, if you want to come up to the microphone, you can come to the table if you like.
Also, you'll see at this point that the smoke detector has not yet been engaged because the smoke detector in this particular room is out in the hallway where most of us have those, those smoke detectors. And then also in this particular room facility, it is, it is not, does not have sprinklers. As a lot of our older homes and every, our older construction within the city and this area also does not have the sprinklers. Our, our new construction does, which sprinklers and fire and smoke detectors save lives. But as you can see now, the smoke has gone and it's, and it has engaged that, that smoke detector. Now the flames are coming up and you can see that the smoke is banking down. The particles of combustion, so smoke, is now catching on fire as well, and that is coming through the room. And we're only at two minutes from that small trash can fire in, in the corner. So this is two minutes, probably about 30 seconds ago, the 911 system wasn't engaged saying there, there's an issue. So now 30 seconds, now start that, that eight-minute timer. You'll see at three minutes, that room is completely involved at that flashover.
But it's, you know, it's fire and it's also, we have people who have strokes.
Yeah, EMS, 80% of your runs, 80, 90% of your runs are EMS. People have heart attacks or in accidents and different things, this is life and death.
Minutes count to that, and I just think it's, I, I just don't understand that, that, you know, she made this decision and you just be in this, presented basically like on a, on a phone. This is just irresponsible and outrageous.
Outrageous, outrageous.
And we have good communication, we always say, come, let's talk, and if there's an issue, nobody ever says anything. They do a good game when they're here and they, you know, with their nice shirts, and then they walk away and it's just like, they've never been here.
So daytime, sorry, man. There is potential to have four transport units out of service by pulling the personnel out of these stations. You know, that's a huge impact for Prince George's County.
What, what did, you know, Mr. Roberts mentioned Ms. Alsobrooks, but, you know, the administration, this, this was an administrative decision, so the, the fire chief, Ms. Green, did not make this decision on her own. What, what did Ms. Jackson, who was the COO of the county, what, what did she say?
Well, we, we were at a COG meeting, so we didn't have an opportunity to pull off to the side, I had the conversation, but I introduced the topic and she's aware that I intend to follow up.
Ms. Pompey?
So there was no indication of this in the county's budget that they were planning on? I know that at a couple months ago at a PGCA meeting, someone from maybe the Firefighters Association, the union, came, I think you were there, Mayor, and spoke about the, that they were, they were underfunded this year, but they felt like they had overfunded overtime at, at the disadvantage of funding regular staff positions. Do you recall that?
I do recall that.
Yeah, so I don't know if that is, do we know anything about that? Or was there any budget narrative that just... Did we know that, I mean, it just seems like, you know, we do a budget, there's a narrative. So, I mean, this didn't just occur to the fire chief today, right? Like, there's a plan.
Right, I scrutinized the release that was made on the, on the county budget, and I shared that with council and highlighted how much money they, the deficit was, how they closed, they did a lot of vacancy holes, cuts. So I read through that narrative, nowhere in that narrative was there an indication that they were going to make these changes for what, the summer or now through October? So this was the first I heard it, I don't know if Chief Ray, if you had any, you had heard anything through the budget process that these cuts were coming?
No, no.
This is also, I feel like, sort of a, this is a trend. I mean, this has been trending for at least a decade, that there have been fewer and fewer career firefighters at our stations. They've been closing stations, they've been just pulling them out altogether, like, it's been happening more and more. I know that you all probably know that better than me, but...
So like the trend, as you, you stated, once they can get pulled...
They don't go back.
They don't come back.
And sometimes those stations close altogether because of it, because the volunteers aren't always able to...
Fortunately, here in Prince George's County, we had, there's two, three, three stations that have been closed, you know, completely due to no staffing.
So you mentioned Bunker Hill, that's down in Brentwood?
Brentwood, yes.
And did you, I know Branchville and Beltsville, they've been having a lot of, Beltsville, the Beltsville Fire Station, a lot of issues there. There was a big fallout, there's a meeting coming up in a couple of days out there, about there. I guess, but that has something to do with the station itself and not so much with personnel, or is it both? And people were being pulled up to Laurel, is this where, where, where are these, do you have a sense of where, where are...
So there is a service gap, there is a service gap in the Laurel area in an even time. Both stations there are staffed during the daytime by county personnel and in even time by the volunteers. So in the even time, there's sometimes the stations don't have personnel to run the calls. So there was mention to move personnel from 31 up to 10. The original statement was the station from 31 was inadequate. I don't know if you followed in Beltsville News or whatever, that report came out and that was unfounded to be, you know, the truth. So I don't know where they stand right now with relocating the personnel. I'm worried about Greenbelt and staffing our station.
Yeah, so you said Bunker Hill, did you say Bladensburg also?
Well, Bladensburg's already 100% volunteer, so that's only put an additional stress on them for covering Bunker Hill. Because stations 13, 7 are 100% volunteer as well and mostly out of service. So Station 9 is already covering them areas, now it's on increase with covering Bunker Hill as well. 39 Bowie was a daytime station, staffed by personnel.
Where is that, is that on...
Off of 450.
Off of 450?
Yeah.
That's crazy, I, I can understand why there might be a shortage in Laurel because, you know, they keep approving townhouses and new development up there without having adequate public service. You know, it's, it's a real issue. So, you know, fortunately, here in Greenbelt, in this part of the county, we're able to keep a handle on things. Man, this is really making me mad, Mr. Roberts?
Well, I think this kind of points out that the, the system we have now, when the developers want to make a big development, they pay a fee in lieu of. And it's obvious that system is, is not working, it never has really worked. And because, you know, the Greenbelt is a perfect example. 2,500 apartments and a Beltway Plaza parking lot, and there's no school plan, there's no firehouse plan, there's no police plan, there's nothing planned, just more houses. So that's, that's, that's why we have this situation right now. Because we have all this development and we have fee in lieu of, and that money just disappears into a big hole and the services and the facilities that you need never come. And so here we are, you know, and, and then they claim it's just because of overtime or something, but the, the real problem is, is far bigger than that. It's because we don't require, you know, the developers and others to provide what they should be providing and what used to be provided. But now it's just fee in lieu of, fee in lieu of, and fee is in lieu of nothing, that's what it is. It's a fee in lieu of nothing.
So I, I want to focus on our actions, I'm sorry, Ms. McKinney, please go ahead.
Just a quick question, you mentioned pulling the firefighters Monday through Friday, what happens on the weekend?
Well, we try to staff that. We'll try to. Brown Heights has a good volunteer pool, so that's why they only have a day staffing for career personnel. And then at 3:00, the volunteers take over, and then on weekends and holidays, they have volunteer coverage. We have assigned right now six personnel around the clock, because our volunteers are a little bit more limited. So that's why, that's why I just said, you know, during the daytime, you know, there's potential of having no coverage.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, it's not acceptable, so administratively, you've got a meeting set up at 3:00. Politically, you know, council and elected officials, we need to, we need to talk. We need to raise this up with our county representatives and find out if they knew that this was coming or not. Hopefully, they didn't though.
So tomorrow morning, we'll circulate several different letters to different representatives so the council can wait on, so that we can get those letters out as soon as possible. I don't think we need to wait till the 17 to approve letters.
No, we have relationships, so I, you know, I can pick up the phone.
Yes, you also have your individual relationships.
Mr. Roberts?
Are there, are there any all-volunteer stations that have enough coverage just from volunteers? Does that exist at all?
So, so Bladensburg, there are a couple stations throughout the county that are 100% volunteer, that 24/7, they're always in service.
Are there any municipalities in the state that have their own firefighters?
I'm not sure on that, I know recently Carroll County, each individual corporation had their own personnel, and they got funding from the county and also from, some of the stations were in cities and got funding from them to have the personnel staffing. But now the, the system is being a county-based system now, so the county took over and slowly implementing staffing.
Thank you. No, I'm just, I think, yeah, I just, it's frustrating to be blindsided by this without a lot of notice to do anything about it.
Especially during the summertime when, you know, most of the volunteers are going on vacations and stuff, so...
How long does it take, I mean, how does somebody become a volunteer firefighter? How long would it actually take to get somebody up to speed with no experience?
So the application process takes three, three to four months, if we're lucky? Up to six months just to get them through the application process. Once that's completed, if there's a class available to get them into a fire class or EMT class, EMT class is almost, almost 300 hours now, you know, a little bit over 250 hours. Fire class is 120 hours or so, and that's the minimum that we need to provide care from Prince George's County standards. And other standards that are going in place come July 1st for the volunteers, a big impact is fire officer one training to ride the right front seat as an officer on that piece. So we're in a scramble countywide to get personnel trained so we can ride the front seat of the fire engine and, you know, and still provide, you know, a service as a volunteer.
Yeah, that's helpful. So our equipment is just going to, you know, in times where there's no staffing, our equipment will just sit there? When it could be saving, saving lives? It's crazy, crazy stuff. Jay Davis?
I mean, that decision literally puts people's lives at risk. I just, I just don't understand.
Jay Davis, Greenbeldees, I know that we had, I, I attended at least two sessions with our state delegates, it also included some county, about the budgets. And I know with the county budget I read over, besides the fact that they had to clear a gap, just like we had to clear a budget gap, they are having, as everyone across the nation is having, is having difficulty attracting firefighters, career firefighters, and maintaining and retaining them, as you said, they, they leave early. And part of it could be the pay, so maybe that's one way, but that's, I know with their budget, they did increase the budget for firefighters for attraction, attracting and training. That's not going to help us because that's, as you said, takes a year, takes months, a year to, to get somebody trained. And that isn't even sure that you're going to get them. Part of the problem, just like with police officers, is that firefighters and police officers are not being respected by the public. They very often are shot at, or yelled at, or cursed at, or not, they're not, it's not the respected career that used to be. Our population and our public are not treating our firefighters and, and, and police officers the way that they should be respected. And so they can find other ways to go get a different job. So I guess one of the questions that we need to ask, what was the average response time to a medical situation or an accident situation? And with this change, what will, what do they think the response time is going to be? And I think then we make that public. Because if the public thing knows that it used to be that you could have a response of five minutes or six minutes, and now it's going to be 20, I think we'll get a lot of citizens that'll be very upset too. So you need to, to ask about the response time. We have a lot of accidents that are auto accidents, we have a lot of seniors, we have, it's, I just can't... I mean, people, our people are going to die. And I think this right, comes right down to it, people are going to die because of this decision.
Sad state of affairs, council member?
Is there a contact information that we can make sure that the public knows who to contact at the county to express, you know, concerns or their opinion on it? Like, we want to make sure that that's out there, that people don't have to dig for it or anything like that?
There's like a petition floating around already, just contacting with contact information for Chief Green and Angela Alsobrook.
On the response time, I understood the response time. Chief and I spoke about the theory that should we have no fire or EMS transport units in Greenbelt and Bourbon Heights does not have any, we'll be looking at at least an eight-minute response time, is that right, Chief?
It's not acceptable.
Give or take, yes.
Probably more, because they're, they're going to come from where? Where are they going to come from?
College Park.
College Park, so you know what the traffic is like. So by the time they, they get in here to Greenbelt, that, that can take a little longer.
And that wouldn't just affect Greenbelt, because, you know, the, the calls are pooled, so it's, it's, you know, it's Riverdale Park, it's New Carrollton, it's College Park.
That's why, you know, I interrated, you know, the calls that we ran, you know, outside of Greenbelt, you know, and, and how many companies were... how many companies were ahead of us before, you know, we got pulled to run that call? So those companies were already on calls and you're three or four companies deep before we get, you know, picked up. So them units are already, you know, not available. So now your pool from other stations are a greater distance coming into the city.
This is outrageous. Ms. Higgins, you had a comment. The mayor of Berwyn Heights, is she online?
She is. She declined to be made a panelist. If, Mayor Papa Nicholas, if you have anything to say, go ahead and raise your hand. I can give you permission to speak.
I'm still Peggy Higgins and live in Windsor Green. You know, the county executive is running for senate and would not want this to be public, would be my thought. And my thought would be as a negotiating tool that there'd be a press conference to discuss this unless it gets reversed might be helpful.
So, good point. Yeah, there's gonna be a mayor's call on another issue tomorrow, so I can bring this up. But, and you've got some letter drafts. What, with, in terms of the, in terms of the volunteer firefighters, you, you have like an organization, it's not a union or is it a union, it's an organization? But it's an organization, so what, what, what's the conversation been within that? And also with the, the career firefighters, you know, they're probably not too happy about this either, so what, what are they saying?
Like I said, this was just introduced to us last evening and then, you know, full scope of other stations came out this morning. I'm sure the union is not too happy. I can't truly speak on that, so I hadn't heard anything from the union representative. The association I haven't heard from, but on the commission meeting we had tonight, there's, you know, concern and a lot of people expressed concern about, you know, pulling the staff and then the huge service gaps and, you know, the additional impact it's gonna have on the surrounding volunteer corporations on, you know, increase on call volume.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing this to attention. Thanks for all you do. Go ahead.
I spent about seven hours down at the firehouse today and discussed the situation with a couple of the career firefighters. To answer on a personal level, they're, they're a little upset that they're leaving Greenbelt Fire Station. They do not wanna leave. So, you know, that's, that's one good thing to say, but one thing I wanna bring to point, the fire department is built on standards. Standard operating procedures, standards for fire trucks, five hundred gallons, how much they gotta pump. And they're set by National Fire Protection Agency. There's a law out there that says that on a density population in the community, the National Fire Protection Agency states you must have fire protection. So what's happening right now could fall in illegal ranges with the county government, what they're dealing. So that's just one thing to think about, is you have to get a good lawyer in there, set us straight. It's all about the money. But money could not justify taking the service away from the citizens. There are gonna be impact because it's not, this is not a rules area where you had one fire station, had a couple farmers down on Supriana Road, Greenbelt respond there. Yeah, it might take them a little longer. The population, the density here has grown in the last couple of years immensely. So to cut back on the services is so detrimental and so disheartening that the fight would be to go and find out exactly what the NFPA standards are. I know years ago, there was an NFPA standard that stated that you had to have, when the, when a new development was built, they had to provide enough fire service for it. So I still think that's in place.
It's a national standard or is it a state?
National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA.
And Mayor Papa Nicholas did raise her hand.
Mayor Papa Nicholas, are you there?
I am, I am. Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, and congratulations, welcome, welcome to the elected official.
Oh, thank you very much.
Seriously, congratulations. And so, yes, this is, this is life and death. I can't believe that this is happening. Please go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just saying, I, I'm, I am shocked as you are to hear this and I'm really thankful that you had a meeting scheduled tonight so that we can start to bring the public awareness of this issue. And as you know, in Berwyn Heights, we are gonna be affected by this a lot. I am very concerned about our citizens, our seniors especially, who I know have already, a couple of them have heard the news and have been reaching out. I, I am certain that somehow we'll be able to come up with a plan and I appreciate that you are starting tonight with that and let us know whatever support we can give. We're standing with you on this one.
Thank you, thank you very much. So city manager somewhere on you, three o'clock, there's a meeting. So if you can provide us with as much written talking points or facts that we can share, that, that will be helpful. So I think we have to go at this administratively, I think we have to go at it politically and that has to be nuanced because, you know, our county executive is running for a very, very important statewide post. But at the same time, this is, this is people's lives we're talking about. So it's, it's a sad day that we're having this conversation.
Quickly.
Thing, Chief Ray, President Jelani, anything else?
No, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to bring this forward and the city manager working with us and hopefully, you know, we can figure this out and with your support and influence to the, you know, county level, hopefully they won't get pulled.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Any other information items?
Yes, I have one. The two elevators at the community center are not, are not working.
Both of them or just one of them?
Both of them. So once, one needs, has parts that have been ordered for the repairs necessary. The other one's been evaluated for what's going on. There, these two elevators are from nineteen eighty-nine, so they have a few years on them. They're past their end of useful life, so we should have been discussing, actually the team had started the conversation to replace them back in twenty seventeen. I'm picking up that conversation because we're at the point where we need to replace them.
They were both put in at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty-five, thirty-five years old.
Yes.
So I, I know the Golden Age Club held its meeting over at the youth center today. And I imagine the community center staff is communicating with any groups with reservations on the second floor, but I guess there are dance classes up there as well and but for the seniors and for people with mobility challenges, it's, it's too much to expect for them to be able to get up the steps.
Right, there's gonna be some mobility challenges moving through the building. We have so many users in the space that there's no ideal way of relocating everyone's schedules to ensure that they're all ADA accessibles, but the team is going to work on making some schedule modification like the one you just mentioned to ensure that some of these meetings are accessible. There's no easy fix to it. We're, we're gonna do our best to shuffle things around and, but more importantly, try to get those elevators working up and running as fast as possible and look at replacing them. So we'll be looking at another, possibly another expenditure of over a million dollars. I don't know where we're gonna get it, but we'll figure something out.
Is that for, is that a million each or is that a million total?
The, the, the total, and this is just shop talk. I don't want the, well, the paper can quote me, but it's just shop talk, it's just an estimate. We won't know how much it'll really cost until we have a proposal in hand that a vendor is willing to back up.
Right.
We don't have a proposal in hand right now. The team is just ballparking an estimate just so we can start planning. We're looking at one point two million.
Right, so I mean, there's the, the dollar cost, then there's the, the opportunity or the, the cost in time just in terms of being able to, to use the facility. So, so I would suggest, this has probably already been done, maybe sending a note to all groups that have reservations up there, just informing them that, that the elevators are broken and, and, you know, even though we may not be able to shift every single event around, at least we would tell these groups that are renting our facilities that there is an issue and that they need to make participants aware of that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll just have the team communicate directly with the groups and we'll put out a public statement on this and we'll commit to providing a regular update on this because, you know, folks are, may wanna just hear that we're continuing to work on this. Just even if the response is the same, we'll continue to work on it, but we'll provide those updates.
Councilmember.
Is there any way we could install temporary ramps? Because people can't even access the first floor.
I mean, the steps there.
Yeah, because.
From that side.
Yeah.
Around the historic entrance, there is, there is a ramp.
But not on the inside, there's still a couple of steps on the inside.
Yeah, there's still steps on the inside, so if you're in a wheelchair, you can't, you have to use that elevator.
Right.
But, but, well, but I think if they go to the other entrance, the one that's, the historic entrance, I think there's a full ramp, isn't there, Michael?
Goes into the administrative office wing.
Yeah, so that might be something we need to make sure we communicate, because there is a way to get in without stairs, but it's, but we may need to make that more accessible during the time the elevator's not working.
That's an operational thing that we can work around. We can.
Just because, because it's so hard to even access the first floor.
Right.
Boy, between the pool and this, it's gonna.
After Monday's meeting, I, I, the approval and how quickly that meeting went, I, I was just so thankful. I thought I was gonna have an easy week.
There goes the elevator, elevators.
Fire service.
And fire service.
The thing about deferred maintenance though, you always, you always pay for it later, so.
Costs more down the road, yes.
Yeah, cause now can't, good parts probably, you have to exchange the entire.
Okay, hey, thank you for that update. That's, that's important to know. Okay, council, let's, let's go ahead. If there are no additional information items, let's, let's call it a night. Thank you so much.